I'd like to call this September 22, 2022 Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Onagostu, would you take the roll?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stovcek?
Here.
Mrs. Hausum?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is our district goals. Our district goals remain the same: academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And our shout-out today is a little bit about academic achievement and growth, and maybe a little bit about community engagement. But earlier today, seven area high schools joined Strongsville in a Unified Sports Flag Football Tournament at Pat Katan Stadium. Unified Sports is a team sport program that brings people together. It eliminates barriers and stereotypes about people with intellectual disabilities in a fun way that engages the whole community. Unified Sports goes beyond sports training and competition to promote social inclusion and meaningful connections. The Spirit Squad and SHS students were also there to cheer the players on the field. So it is a good example of community engagement. Next on our agenda is recognitions, and I turn it over to Mrs. Kilbane and Ms. Stovcek for OSBA Student Achievement.
We are back with the student achievement awards, the extra mile award that we created, and we'd like to bring up Mr. Wiegler to explain why he nominated Tracy Davidson for the award this month. And if we could have Tracy come on up, too.
Shorter than you. So when they, when these two ladies emailed me and talked about who to nominate this year, I have to say, sometimes it's difficult because we have so many amazing people at the high school. But I thought, you know, academically, we have, we have people who have impacted academics, and I wanted to focus on someone who has had a massive impact in our building on the emotional well needs of our students. Tracy, Mrs. Davidson, is one of our counselors at the high school, and truly, in my time at the high school, has been a champion for the emotional needs of our students. Last year, she worked with John's Room, Safe Place, John Safe Place, which is a room at the high school. I'm going to let these ladies explain more because they had the pleasure of coming to see it. But she's done more than just that. We have a group of students going to a mental health summit next month, and I think Ms. Stovcek will explain more of that as well. But just on a day-to-day, when I have a student that is in distress or has a need, Tracy is a go-to person for me. My immediate thought is, where's Tracy? Because, you know, kids, including some kids in my own house, that have had, needed someone to talk to, not named Dad. Tracy has been there for them and has been there for all of our students, so I immediately thought of her. And then when you got a chance to see what she did and what she's brought to the school, I think that even showed you the impact. So I want you guys to explain more about John Safe Place.
Strongsville High School has been fortunate enough to have a room designed for students who may be struggling with anxiety or depression and are having a difficult time coping at school on any given day. The room is called John Safe Place and was donated by the JCH Foundation. It is available to students who need a safe place to decompress during the school day in an effort to keep them in school and get them back to class. It's filled with calming sensory items, a couch, a fish tank, and much more. And Sharon and I had the opportunity to see the John Safe Space or Place inside the office, and it was amazing. It was beautiful. The first thing we did, we walked in, we were reading quotes that were on the walls, and we were saying just for ourselves how inspiring they were and how, getting choked up even thinking about it, how beautiful it was and how calming it was. We went to Mrs. Davidson's office, and we saw just how calming her office was, not even with even speaking to her, but just the setting of it, the lighting of everything. And she really takes, she really takes us seriously, and she really puts her heart into everything she does, and that goes without even speaking a word to her. You can see how much time and effort she puts into just the actual tangible things, let alone actually speaking to her. And if you want to...
I just want to say that my daughter, she remembered my daughter after almost 20 years. And she said, oh, I remember your daughter. I don't know if that's good or bad, but I mentioned it to my daughter, and she said, oh, my God, I loved her. So you've been doing this work for a really long time, and you don't look your age, or however old you are, but you look great. Anyway, congratulations, because it's something near and dear to my heart, and you've done a really great job. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
And when we met with Tracy, she was talking about the different things that she had planned throughout the year for the students, whether it was going to the Teen Mental Health Summit at Rocket Mortgage Field House, which now I'm going to go for half a day and check it out, too. She's very excited about everything she does, whether it's during the school day, whether it's after hours, on the clock, off the clock. She gives 110%, and that was evident just from talking to her for about a half hour. And we saw just how excited she was about what she does, and how happy she was to do what she does, and how much the kids mean to her. And that is a very beautiful thing and a wonderful thing, and I think that shows that she goes the extra mile for the students and for the community, and we can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Like, way shorter. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and even more so, I do want to give thanks to the JCH Foundation, because without that family, and their giving nature, we wouldn't have this room. So, working with them, they supplied absolutely everything and funded the entire room, and the turnover time to get this room for our Strongsville students was really quick. And the amount of students that have already used this room and benefited from this room since it opened September 6, which the day after Labor Day, is incredible. And I've heard nothing but positive things from the kids about it, too. So we're a really, really lucky school to have one.
I just want to say, if you don't know Tracy, I've been asking Tracy to speak to the staff for a couple of years now, and she will not speak in front of people. The fact that she's...
The staff.
The staff. She, I came in, I came in tonight, and she said, do I have to say something? I go, no, not at all. Then waited about five seconds for her to, sorry, I lied, you do. Did a great job.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So I would just like to add my congratulations to Ms. Davidson. Guidance counselors are, I think they're assigned by last name, and so, good or bad, Mrs. Davidson has been the guidance counselor for four MICOs, and we know the work she does, and it's not just one year, it's not just one month, it's not just the start of the school year, it's an entire career. So congratulations, and thank you very much.
And the children are great.
I'm sure the money will arrive tomorrow. Next is Coach of the Year Spirit Award. Mr. Ziegler.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll call up Coach Don Thall. So Coach Thall, back in March of last year, was named a Varsity Brands Most Spirited Coach of the Year. And so what this is, is, so Varsity Brands, who runs Varsity Spirit, BSN Sports, as well as Herv Jones, back in 2014, they had started these School Spirit Awards. And what they found is a direct link between students who have high school spirit and a link towards their self-confidence and their academics. So what these awards do, there are actually, there are, I think there's 14 different categories, and they are set up to recognize students, coaches, principals, and schools that go above and beyond to make students feel part of the school. So Coach Thall was a finalist among 17 different coaches across the entire U.S., and she was chosen as the, as the most spirited coach for 2022. If you don't know Dawn, Dawn goes above and beyond her role as an aide, as a coach, and as a mom. If you ever go into her office as a coach, she always has food, drinks, water, always set up for every kid. It's not just those that are on her team. Dawn is a hugger. She will hug anybody that comes into contact with her, and that's what students love most about her. I don't think there's ever a day where Dawn has, has never come into our office and asked us how we are doing, immediately just to check in on how we are as a human being. Her student athletes that she has coached over the last couple of years have absolutely loved how she has built that hardcore, personal relationship with them that they can take with them. I will say, last year, Dawn had a lot of, a lot of personal things that went on in her life, and she never let that affect her girls on the team, her job here. You know, her daughter Brooklyn had some major back surgery, and she never once missed a time with her students, her other coaching staff, and she just goes above and beyond the call of duty. And she always puts the students of Strongsville first, and that is very, very evident when she misses her own daughter's games, who is a D1 athlete at Kent State. So, the 2022 Varsity Brands Most Spirited Coach Award, Don Thall, thank you very much, and also, congratulations.
First, I would like to thank Mr. Ziegler for nominating me for this incredible honor. I take my job very seriously, and the greatest joy I have in life is bringing and changing the lives of those around me, whether they be students, my family, or anyone. So whether I'm on the court, or in my classroom, or on the unified field, I want to change kids' lives, and that's exactly what I'll do for the remainder of my time in Strongsville. I take great pride in it, and I was incredibly blessed and honored to have this award, and I shed many tears over it. Of all the people in the country, you know, to be recognized as was such an honor, but more importantly, I want to thank my family for always supporting me through coaching and being an aide and taking these kids. You know, I've taken some of my own students into my own home and celebrated their, their milestones and their victories, and to have my family be a part of that is so incredibly amazing, and they get to share in the milestones of the kids I work with. So that connection has been incredible. So I want to thank all of you for honoring me tonight, and Mr. Ziegler, again, for nominating me for this incredible honor, for the incredible people I work with every day, and for the students that make my life better every single day. Thank you.
So the only thing I can say, Denny, is signing her up for Most Spirit Award, like there was any doubt. It could have been international. We know she would have won, so congratulations. We do have one public comment so far. Bev Jones. You've been with us before, Bev. You know the drill.
That was a long walk. I'm going to sit over here this time. My name is Beverly Jones. I am at 15134 Camden Circle, Strongsville. And what else did I say? I forget. Did I, is that all you need to know? Okay. I am here because I, I thoroughly support what's going on in Strongsville. I'm so proud of the people and the accomplishment of the kids, both in academics and sports, and the work that you're doing through, that they're doing for us to make us look good in the community. I'm loving it. But, not but, didn't mean to say that. But while I'm looking at how this year could go, I think avoiding some things is, is much better than trying to hit things as they come. So, we as human beings do have conflicts from time to time. And I looked in our manual, our policy manual for Strongsville Schools, and I found a section here that says controversial issues. And I just wanted to mention what was written here, just so everybody knows how our school plans to handle when controversy occurs. Not if, when, you know, we're humans, we have situations. Okay, so I'm going to read directly from it, okay? "For the purposes of this policy, a controversial issue is a topic on which opposing points of view have been promulgated by responsible opinion, likely to arouse both support and opposition in the community." Well, we know that those things happen. It says, "The board will permit the introduction of proper educational use of controversial issues, provided that their use in the instructional program is related to the instructional goals of the course of study and level of maturity of the students." I like that part. We're not going over kids' heads with something they don't need to be discussing. Further down, it says, "When controversial issues have not been specified in the course of study, the board will permit the instructional use of only those issues which have been approved by the superintendent, designee, and/or principal." So it kind of tells us where the buck stops is if anything crazy comes up. I like that, because that says we can predict how the outcome's going to be if we have any situations occur. Well, we haven't, that I know of, had this happen, so this is a perfect time to be talking about it, before it happens. So I just picked one. It's probably the most, it's probably the most severe one I could have thought of, which might, might be a bit much, but I want to read straight from the state standards, since our school district has pretty much followed state standards for this, that, and the other, so that we can all kind of be on one accord with these things. So I picked up this one from state standards. It's under Section 6, Team Membership, and it says, "Boys may not play on girls' teams unless the overall opportunities," as referred in the 1979 U.S. Department of Education Title IX Policy, okay, "is interpreted." Okay? And it also says, "A male-to-female transgender student may participate on girls' team as long as she is compliant with the OHSAA," okay, Ohio High School Athletic Association. That's what we pretty much want to follow. Okay? "Transgender policies." Please see the policies on the transgender students, and then it gives a website. Okay? So that's pretty clear, even though the website doesn't exist. But I noticed Title IX. I just want to mention to everyone that Title IX, there's a man named Brendan Shea, who is with the Ohio Education Association, has brought up a resolution to Title IX, because it's not really clear what we're talking about in this case. This, of course, isn't, may not even ever come up. But Title IX is, is very important, because Brendan's going to, his resolution is going to define it for us all. So it's not vague as far as what we're talking about, what we're dealing with, and how we may come up with solutions. Okay? So I'm going to leave this information with you, and I'm going to encourage you strongly to investigate this resolution by Brendan Shea with the Ohio Education Association, and it's called Title IX, because it will trickle down and affect us. Okay? And again, thank you for a wonderful beginning to the school year, and we really appreciate the hard work that you're doing.
Bev, before you leave, real quick, just as a point of clarification, the standards that you reference to, those do not resonate with me as any academic standards that we're teaching. I think you're referencing bylaws of the Ohio High School Athletic Association?
Yes, because the academic standards that we go by are wonderful. I mean, I've checked those out. What I'm talking about are the things that are askew from the academic excellence that we have in our district. This is what we need to watch.
Correct. So just for the, for the, maybe other people that are not as versed in this as you, the academic, the math, science, social studies, you know, physical education, those standards, that's not what you were referencing tonight.
No, it's not at all.
You were referencing bylaws regarding to OHSAA. And, Denny, I can see behind there a little bit. Currently, the OHSAA bylaws that Bev were referencing, you have to be born male to participate in male sports. Is that still the rule? Yes. So, so in terms of what we're seeing nationally, as transgender adults can compete in sports based on their gender identity, that's not a part of Ohio High School Athletic Association rules at this time.
Well, the part I didn't read says, see, in 163, I read that. In 162, it says, "A girl or transgender male who is compliant with OHSAA transgender policies, who is a member of a boys' team, shall follow all contest rules," blah, blah, blah. Verse one, number one, it says, "Girls may play on a boys' team." So, I mean, you know, it's different for girls and boys, which, girls may play on a boys' team.
Thank you, Bev, for answering that. I appreciate it.
All right. My pleasure. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I don't have any other public comment slips at this time. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. We do have a plethora of minutes up for adoption. All district video and audio recordings will be permanent part of the minutes and available on our website. Do I have a motion?
Richard, before we have the motion, the August 1st, 2022 minutes need to be removed from the agenda.
Ah, thanks for the reminder. So we are pulling August 1st, 2022, minutes from the agenda. We are approving the remaining minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stovcek. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
And Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next on our agenda is Treasurer's Report. You're up, George.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for your consideration tonight, and also a presentation of the annual budget for this school year 2022, '23. The first item is the financial report for month ending August 31, 2022, which can be found in Exhibit A. It is also posted on the website. Item B, the permanent appropriations, this is where I have the presentation to go along with this. The permanent appropriations can be found in Exhibit B. We were currently on, by law, we are currently on a temporary appropriation measure until September 30. I like to begin the year with temporary appropriation from July to September, as we're still doing hiring over the summer and kind of finalizing our staffing and our, any contracts and other expenses that we may have as we begin the school year. And by law, we have till September 30 to adopt the budget. And then, once we adopt the budget, I like to do what's called a budget forecast, just to show, this is how much we budgeted, and can we, can we afford what we budgeted. So kind of do a budget forecast along with that. And then, in November, again, I have to formally present the five-year forecast to the board, be adopted, and submitted to the Department of Education by November 30. So, starting off with, and what's different from my typical five-year forecast presentations is, in the beginning, I'll have all funds, and then we'll just focus on the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the district. Estimated resources, we have to submit what's called a certificate of estimated resources to Cuyahoga County, and it's all funds, and what it, it's broken down by each individual fund, and it looks at the unencumbered balance, the estimated revenues that were received for the year, and then a total of all estimated resources. Our budget per fund can't exceed the total estimated resources for that given fund. For the general fund, we're beginning the year with $60.3 million in cash. We'll estimate to receive $85.8 million in revenue to give us a total estimated resources for the general fund of $146.1 million. And then, overall, all funds combined, and just to kind of give you an example of what these funds represent, Fund 1 is our main operating fund. Fund 18 is a student, is the principal student activity account. Fund 200, 300 are the student activity accounts. One's student-managed, the other one's district-managed. Any 400-numbered funds or grant, or state grant funds, any 500-numbered funds are state federal funds. And then we also have our debt service funds, our capital projects funds, our enterprise funds, such as food service, and then what's called internal service funds, which are essentially ins and outs. So, overall, in all those funds, we have a, we have unencumbered beginning cash of about $73.1 million, estimated revenues for all funds, $115.4 million, and total estimated resources for all funds, about 188 million point five. And then, to go along with the estimated resources, I need to submit an annual appropriation measure to Cuyahoga County, and this can be amended throughout the year. And we typically do that for more of the grant funds than we do the general fund. The general fund is, I kind, although we can change it throughout the year, kind of don't like to change it unless it's necessary. So, the general appropriation measure that I'm estimating for the budget to be is $81.4 million. We have carryover encumbrances, which were open purchase orders from the prior year of $2.3 million, for a total appropriation of $83.4 million. The total annual budget for all funds combined is $111 million, $111.7 million, plus carryover encumbrances, about $4 million, so a total appropriation of $115.7 million. So, any questions on that so far? And then what I like to do, just for the general fund, is kind of break down where our funding is going by, by function, by area, and per pupil amount. So, in total, the general fund appropriation is $81.4 million, and breaking that down by per pupil, it's $14,338 per pupil, which is increased by 100, by $806 from the prior fiscal year of $13,532. And if you look at the areas where it's going per pupil, 41% of the appropriations go into regular instruction or $5,900. Special education is about $11 million for 14.5% of the budget at $2,079. And then, so, and then, so you can see the breakdown from there on. And then, going into the five-year, the budget five-year forecast, I presented this in May for fiscal year 23, for fiscal year '22, which also set up the, the budget for fiscal year '23. I'll have to do it again for November, so I'm not going to spend too, I'll cover the highlights, but I won't spend too much detail, since I got to present it again in two months.
Take all the time you need, George.
So, again, I think you're familiar with the forecast, where I have major assumptions, the general fund revenues, expenditures, and forecast summary. The major assumptions, one change from the spring is our, we received all the collections for calendar year 20, the current calendar year 2022. So, the gross correct, I can't talk, the gross collection rate has increased the three-year average from 96.85% to 98.53%. We did see an increase last year of 99.26%. So, of the three-year average, which is used to forecast out the remaining years, it has increased based on the increase that we saw this year. The assessed valuation, not anticipating a big change this year, as last year was the triennial update, so any changes this year will be for any, or revision adjustments through the process, or any property changes from exempt status to a tax status. And then our public utility values... And then, our public utility values for the prior year increased about 1.7%. But the annual increase, I have the historical average of 6.4%. So, something we'll need to watch if that trend of the increase for public utility values is either catching, or slowing down, or it's going to continue on the, on the historical pace. And then, in, in May, the, May 2019, we had the five-year, 5.9 mil levy that began collections in January 2020. And then, the forecast assumes the levy will expire in December 31st, 2023. And collections will continue through December 31st of 2024. And then, last November, we have a levy that's expiring at the end of this year. Yeah, the levies expired at the end. This year, we renewed it. And collections will begin January 2023. And the levy will expire December 31st, 2026. And collections will continue through December 31st, 2027. State funding is based on the new funding formula that was approved last year. Next year, we'll go through another budget bill. So hopefully, the items that were passed in the previous funding formula continue as have a little consistency with the funding formula, but just the area to keep an eye on as the budget talks begin this year for the biennial budget. As part of the new funding formula, we do have more restricted grant aid. We have the wellness funds, the disadvantaged pupil fund, the gifted funds, that are restrictions on what we have to spend in those categories for the upcoming school year. The gifted, the gifted amount is $191,000. We easily exceed that with the teachers that we already have in place. The success and wellness funds, our restricted amount that we have to spend is $211,000. And then, our college career tech is $34,000. And our disadvantaged use is $48,000. And a lot of these categories, we've, these are just restricted amounts that we at least have to spend, and which we, in most categories, we exceed. Personnel trends, we did see an increase in personnel trends for this year from last year. So, this is all funds and not just the general fund. Last year, we saw, we had 762 positions in all funds, of which 50, 49% was made up of teachers, 15% was made up of aides. And then, the other positions you can see is transportation, 8%, custodials, 7%, clerical, 5%, and administrative, 4%. From last year to this year, we did have an increase of 14 positions. In the spring, I had estimated an increase of seven, but throughout the summer, due to enrollment and, and needs at the, at the schools, we had increased about another eight. Majority was in teachers. We also had a couple administrative additions for one year as we're covering long-term illnesses. And then, there was also additional aides that were needed to support some of the new enrollment that came in. And how that impacts the, the general fund. As they, for general fund, for the current fiscal year 23, we have about 701 budgeted positions. So, 16 increased from last year. In fiscal year 24, estimating two positions down, which will be those two interim positions that we have for this year. And then, in fiscal 25, you'll see an increase of 12 positions, which are positions that are currently funded on ESAR that are anticipated to move over to the general fund. And then, for this school year, healthcare increased, healthcare expenses increased by 8.7%. And for the forecasts in fiscal years 24 to 20, fiscal year 2024 to 2027, projects an annual increase of 8% for each year. So, it's something that we'll need to continue to monitor. For November, I'll have to see if 8% is still a good number or how our claims are coming in, if we'll need to increase that number to either 9 or 10%. So, something to keep an eye on over the next couple of months on the impact for the November forecast. And the one thing I do want to add on the personnel, from what I budgeted in the spring for the, for the forecast, our personnel savings is actually, although we're up positions, we're actually down in salary and benefits due to separations coming off and retirements versus the salary benefits for the new positions coming in. So, although we're, we're up overall, salary and benefits were $145,000 less from where I forecasted in the spring. And then, just a couple other items to talk about. I have in the forecast, we did have, although these are not part of the general fund, we did have the ESAR funds that we utilized. The past several years, we had ESAR I. We're currently in the, which has expired after last year. We're currently in ESAR II, which expires this year, and then ESAR III that expires after next school year, 2024. And this chart that we presented in the summer is what we'll be utilizing ESAR II and ESAR III for this, this year and next year. We'll continue to monitor how this year goes. And then, based on the available funds for next year, we'll either make adjustments to 2024 or continue the course. So, overall, general fund revenues, from what I budgeted in the, in the spring to now, revenues have actually, I'm estimating revenues have actually increased by 1.3 million. Majority of that is due to interest income. Last, earlier this calendar year, the Star Ohio interest rate was 0.08%. Right now, as of last Thursday, it was 2.41%. So, as interest, as the federal, as the feds keep upping the interest rate, it may be bad for borrowers, but it's good for investing. And we're seeing a bigger return for our, on our, our dollars that are in the bank. So, I had budgeted $150,000 in interest for this year in the spring. And right now, in this forecast, I have increased it to $900,000. It's something to continue to monitor as rates continue. I think that 900 might be a conservative amount. So, we'll have to continue to monitor the month-to-month amount that we receive and kind of make adjustments from there. And then, the other thing that I changed is our catastrophic cost reimbursement from the state. I increased it by $150,000 from $300,000 to $450,000, which was based on the amount that we received in this June, which was $533,000. And then, lastly, based on our fall collection of property taxes, it was 200, it was about $160,000 more than what I had estimated in the spring. And then, where money comes from, as you can see, majority of our revenue sources, 75% is local taxes coupled with state of Ohio property tax allocations of 7.5. So, overall, close to 82% is coming from combination of property taxes. And then, 9.9% is coming from state foundation. And then, to kind of quickly go over the categories, local taxes for fiscal year 23 projecting $60.6 million for this year. It is up close to 3% from last year. And that is due to last year, we had the large refund due to the appraisal of mall that they had filed for border vision case. So that, so last year was actually down because of the refund. This year should normalize to 60.6% or 60, 60 million, 60.6, $60.6 million. And then, in fiscal year 2025, after, after showing the forecast that the levy will, will expire, and then you can see in the, in the red where the renewal portion represents. The public utility taxes, estimating this year $4.3 million, which is up by $100,000 from the 4.2 collected in 2022. State aid, last year was $7.9 million. This year, slightly up to $8 million, and which is due to the phase-in of the transportation amount that, that is built in the state funding formula. And then, as you can see in the prior years where state funding has dipped and it's due, the dip is due to the past three dollars that are no longer included in the district's revenue. So, it's on a net amount, we're in the positive as the past three dollars are no longer shown as revenue or expenses. Restricted aid is, has increased over the prior years as more, due to the new funding formula, more areas are now restricted with the wellness, the gifted, and the disadvantaged pupil. So, that amount has increased, it's kind of a shift from unrestricted to restricted. And then, each year, that restricted amount is decreasing, which is kind of based on the formula. But we can continue to spend as we see fit. Property tax allocation, that is pretty much consistent. Other revenue, anticipating $5.7 million for fiscal year 2023. And that is made up of preschool tuition, kindergarten tuition, tuition from other districts based on court place of students, interest income, sports pay-to-play and trainer fees, the special education catastrophic aid, Medicare reimbursements, and revenue in lieu of taxes, TIFs. And then, other financing sources, this year estimating 2000, or fiscal year 2023, estimating about $221,000, which is the return of the advance from the grant funds that we, that we advanced at the end of last year to take care of any negatives. And then, in fiscal year 21, where that big number sticks out, that was the re, the one-time reimbursements for, for the Bureau workers' compensation that we received. Any questions on revenues? All right, expenses. So, overall, in expenses from the spring to now, with all, it might not seem like a big, a small change, but it only increased by $65,000, $65,938. There was a lot of movement with different areas, but it all netted out together. There was additional hiring, but the cost of those, the cost of the personnel were a lot less, so that it netted out. We had additional contracts that came on. But overall, compared to the, to the spring, expenses are up only $65,000. Where the money goes, in total, $67.5 million or 83% of our budget is salary and benefits. Then, 9.3% of the budget is purchase services. And then, the remaining amounts make up materials supplies, equipment, and other objects. Salaries, estimating the budget amount $47.9 million for this school year. And again, this is just the budget number. So, as, we may have open positions throughout the year. People come and go, could potentially see a savings there. Same thing with the benefits, estimating $19.5 million. This is the budgeted amount. So, as people may leave throughout the year or have opening positions, this, this may, may see a savings in this category as well. Purchase services, estimating $7.6 million. The budgeted amount for this year, it may look like it's increased from last year, but we did realize some savings or some encumbrances were pushed through this year. Again, if the, it's a budgeted number, so if it's not spent 100%, we'll see a little bit of savings in this line. As well as supplies and materials, which make up office supplies, textbooks, software, fuel, and building and cleaning supplies. Fuel is budgeted at $350,000. It's up $100,000 from where it's been traditionally budgeted. We looked at, um, last year, September through June, or we spent through September through June. But if we look at January through June, last year, we averaged $35,000. So, those 10 months that we spent, I took the $35,000 per month, then came up with a $350,000. Capital outlay, estimated spend $114,000. Our general fund debt, it's the same amount for the past several years. We do have an issue dropping off after fiscal year 24. And then, other objects, pretty much consistent at 1.3 million. And then, other, other trans, other financing sources, transfers and advances, it is up by 1.2 million, which is for this fiscal year, which, or not up, it is estimated at 1.2 million. It's up primarily due to a $750,000 transfer that's built in there based on an item that we had on the ESAR funds that we said the general fund would transfer to the PI fund for the HVAC at Kinsner. And then, how this all comes together to kind of show in summary, if all the renewals are passed when, when need to be passed, this year, we'll have revenues over expenses of 4.4 million. And as expenses begin to increase a little quicker than revenues, next year, fiscal year 2024 will be with 3.3 million. And then, fiscal year 25, our revenues over expenses will be 1.4 million. Fiscal year 26 will kind of average out. And then, in fiscal year 27, we'll begin deficit spending at 1.1 million. If the renewals do not pass, we'll begin that deficit spending in, in fiscal year 2025. And it will continue through, it'll continue moving forward. 2026 will be 9.8 million. And then, fiscal year 27 will be 11 million. So, I tried to be quick. Any questions?
So, first of all, thank you for all the hard work that goes into this. We know, we all know it's a stressful time and it's a time crunch every time this year. We need to make sure that our teachers are hired and our new staff is hired. And then, you need to be able to work the numbers. And naturally, the calendar doesn't give you a lot of room for that. The only thing I was, I was going to say that we should start thinking about between now and the five-year forecast is inflation and how we want to account for it. I mean, everybody's experiencing it. And the same way, the same way our interest income is up, I think we need to take a look at our five-year forecast and say, are, 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 do we need to adjust our assumptions based on a, a general rate, increase in the rate of inflation?
Yeah, the areas that we kind of need to look at are utilities. I think we're all feeling that at a personal level where, at least, I know my own electric has gone up. But I, when I was building this, I was kind of looking at the past two months of electric for the district, and it's kind of been consistent to where it was last year. So, it's an area to keep, keep an eye on. As gas starts coming, as we get towards the winter months, we'll need to look at gas.
Electric stayed pretty consistent?
For the past, for the first three months so far, for what we paid in July, August, and September.
Well, no one was in, we weren't air conditioning up. Were we turning it off?
The buildings were, the buildings were open and.
Yeah.
So.
That's good, because mine's gone up a ton. So, I mean, I can't imagine that we didn't.
Yeah, so we'll have to continue to monitor that if that was just due to usage or, or our rate, our rate is also, Steve here, I think our rate is locked in too, isn't it? Or?
Which one?
Electric.
Electric is, I want to say, it's due December 2023.
Okay. Yeah.
So, I would imagine most of us as homeowners are on NOPEC. And they're having, if you've paid attention to the news, they're having their issues. Eventually, the issues that NOPEC are having will filter down to everyone, but the school is on a, on a different power purchasing. We get it by, what is the name of it, Steve? Power for Schools program. So, we aggregate our power with other school districts to get a good rate, correct?
Yes, through the OSCE.
But we need to be aware of it and take a look at, and plan for it and, and just be wise with our money.
And the other two areas too, to kind of look at is food costs. Do we need to increase the transfer to food services? Based on, food cost is going to increase. Right now, Donna's doing pretty well, but I think they're predicting a supply chain issue again coming in the upcoming months. So, we'll see how that impacts. And then, also, I kind of touched on the assumptions, but healthcare costs, our healthcare cost is going to continue to increase. And right now, we saw the increase based on usage. But now, we might see the increase, not so much on usage, but the actual rate of the, the actual rate of the claim increasing.
Thank you, George.
Oh, I guess I got a couple other items too. I forgot about. I was disconnected for Cameron and just realized that. So, item C, Student Activity Program budgets and Purpose and Goals, which can be found in Exhibit C. There were a few changes that are highlighted on the agenda from what was approved in June. And then, there were two grant approvals from the SEF. One for first grade at Kinsner for Christie Riley, Fidgety Chair Bands of. One for first grade at Kinsner for Christie Riley, Fidgety Chair Bands of sixty-five dollars. And then another one for the middle school for Sabrina Connor and eight hundred dollars for community-based instruction grant. And with that, that concludes my report.
Any other questions for George? Dr. Reiba, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I do have a few slides. I just want to give a few updates to the board. You have them in front of you. But I want to start by talking about our state report card. So if you've again paid attention to Cleveland dot com or the news, the state report card was released. I think a week or so ago. And just to kind of give the board and our community an update, this is the first year of the brand-new state report card. There's been a lot of evolution to it, so there's, there's six categories of the state report card that will eventually be measured. This year, five of them were measured, so the categories are listed on the screen here. So achievement looks at when our, when our kids in grades three through eight and at the high school level, take a state assessment. There's certain benchmarks of performance. How well did they do against those benchmarks? Progress is looking at groups of kids and did they grow, right? Doesn't matter if they hit that benchmark, but were we better this year than we were the previous year? Early literacy looks at how well we're preparing our students to read in grades K to three. Gap closing looks at a variety of student groups, whether it's students with disabilities, English learners, gifted students. Students by, student group by, based on their race. And are students achieving and growing based on their student group versus altogether? Graduation is just that. How well are we graduating our students in four or five years? And then college career workforce and military readiness, this is the one component that's not rated this year. But has a variety of indicators about how well we're preparing our students for life after high school. So I'm not going to go into a lot of depth because in two weeks, Aaron and I will be back to share a comprehensive overview of the state report card. But just again, to kind of highlight what is measured, there is a different ranking system, a rating system now, so in the past it was letter grades. I want to focus your attention on the description as I think that's more impactful than the stars. But if you start at that middle, it's saying, hey, whatever we're measuring achievement, growth, gap closing, you're meeting the state standard. And then if you move up, you've exceeded the standards or significantly exceed the standards. And then what I'm proud of in the new report card is instead of saying you're a failing school, we're talking about support, right? We're talking about how do we help school districts and kids get the support that they need? So either they need support or they need significant support to meet those state standards. So again, just as a high-level overview, as a school district, these ratings come out on how we did as a school district, as well as how we did at each building. But for tonight's discussion for the five rated areas, as you could see, for achievement, progress and gap closing. We received that description of significantly exceed state standards, so that's the highest level of success you can have in those areas. In graduation and early literacy, we exceeded the state standards and we're at that second highest level of success. So just to put it in perspective, I'm extremely proud of the work that we do as a school district and hopefully our parents and community are proud. Because only thirty-one school districts out of all six hundred and seven in the entire state of Ohio performed better on on this recent round of report cards. And again, it's one measure, but based on this measure, that puts Strongsville City Schools in the top five percent of all school districts in the state. So I think that's something to be extremely proud of. And I just want to be clear that this success is not just, a big part of it is our wonderful teachers in the classroom, right? But as we've talked a lot about before, our student success depends on a lot of variety of factors. It depends on the bus driver making it a welcoming supportive environment. It depends on our food service employees of making sure our our kids are nourished. And again, being that warm, friendly, caring face, it depends on our maintenance staff and our custodial staff and our office support staff and people that work here. So even though, yes, our teachers in the classroom do a phenomenal job and they should have a lot of pride. It's a true team effort. All of those seven hundred-ish employees that George said have a stake in this result. So I just want to say congratulations to the hard work that goes into this. We set a a direction, you know, ten years ago, eight years ago, about being a premier district in the region and the state, being in the top ten percent. And it's nice to see all of that work that people have put in be recognized at this level. So just wanted to share that update with the board. And again, two weeks, Aaron is going to lead us through and I'll I'll be there to help support all the details about what this means and what it means in terms of celebrations and strengths to leverage, as well as areas of growth and enhancement as we move forward.
And I thought it was interesting, I was reading, and I pulled it up, there, there was a letter to the editor in the Strongsville Post today that discussed our results and discussed the bang for the buck. And and highlighted that not only are we in, we are in the top twenty-five percent for every category, right? And we're thirty-first out of six hundred and seven school districts. But from a property tax perspective in Cuyahoga County, we're in the lowest third. So as far as a taxpayer or a voter is concerned, they're getting a tremendous bang for the buck.
Lowest third of their tax rate.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. Not in terms of performance, but lowest third in tax rate.
We pay less in tax than over sixty-six percent of the other cities in Cuyahoga County.
Absolutely something to celebrate as well. Thank you, Mr. Miko. The second thing that I wanted to update the board and our community on is our elementary facilities. And when I say elementary, I also will include the preschool in that discussion. So wanted to share with you, if you're, I know the board is aware, but if our community is not. We've had a facilities development committee that's been an active group, it's a board committee that's been an active group for some time in our, in our district. And and one of the first things after we completed the bond project and built the middle school, renovated the high school and the preschool and transportation complex and a variety of other things is they wanted to develop a thirty-year plan. So what the slide you can see on your screen or on the sheet in front of you says that in January twenty sixteen, the facilities development committee culminated this thirty-year plan. And as a part of that thirty-year plan, which started in two thousand fifteen, it took a look at that two thousand twenty to twenty-five range. And as you could see, it says, hey, at the preschool, at the Lund Road preschool, we're going to need to kind of consider critical repairs to that property. Chapman, we need to consider abating and demolishing, and that means possibly looking at a new building. Kinsner, again, critical repairs. Maraski, as you may know, we have a new addition as well as an original instructional wing. So the, and the list goes on for Sarar and Whitney, and then the administrative offices here. What it also says in the asterisk, if you can't see, is during this window of twenty to twenty-five, complete an enrollment analysis. Examine elementary boundaries and elementary construction or renovation bond project. So this is something that was started and discussed in two thousand fifteen. We're now in that time range where we said we wanted to take a look at this. As the board knows in the community through the presentations, we did an enrollment analysis, completed that last spring. And so now it's time to start talking about where are we at with our elementary facilities and the need for construction renovation moving forward. So let's talk about that elementary, or I'm sorry, that enrollment trend analysis. I think in the summertime, we went through that as a board. And just wanted to highlight through the, this is our historical enrollment over the past ten years. So this is actual enrollment of what we had at the different grade levels in our building. And as you can see, in two thousand twelve, we had a little over sixty-one hundred students. That slowly declined and in that yellow box, that's kind of where I'm qualifying, hey, we started to level out a little bit. We had, we were kind of in that mid fifty-four hundred range. We leveled out, we stayed there for a few years. And then starting in two thousand nineteen, twenty, we started to see not just fifteen, twenty kids here or there. But as you can see, from eighteen, nineteen to nineteen, twenty, we saw about eighty, seventy to eighty kids enroll. It was a bigger jump for us. Twenty to twenty-one, we took a dip, but that was the the first full year of COVID. And so parents made different school choices based on their personal needs. But then if you look at last school year, we were at five thousand six hundred and forty-four students. So again, two hundred and some student jumped from the prior year, but if you go back to our last kind of solid year, another hundred students. So that kind of triggers, oh, we got to start seeing what's happening, not because, you know, we have Emerald Woods, there's some other properties that are looking at building. We are not concerned about the number of students that are going to come out of those developments. We can manage those. What is happening now is homes are being sold to families that have children. And the rate of that occurring is happening quicker and quicker. And we're seeing families with kids move in that is increasing our enrollment. So what the enrollment study took a look at is said, alright, now, now we're into projections, even though we were in twenty-two, twenty-three. They projected that we'd have five thousand six hundred and fifty-seven students this year, just a few more than last year, so not, not a major increase. As of August thirty-first, we have five thousand six hundred and seventy-five students, so pretty accurate. If you get into the details, we have more high school students that are here that they predicted and a, and a, and a less in some other areas. But altogether, right in the ballpark of where they expected students to be. So let's take a look at that enrollment and the fact that we've been trending upwards and apply that to our facilities. And board, for your slides, I just kind of kept it all as one slide, so you've got everything on one slide. But as you can see here, we, capacity, in terms of capacity, that's number of students. So based on the formula that says, based on the square footage of usable space in the building, how many students should each building be able to fit? So that's saying Chapman Elementary School should have, be able to comfortably fit three hundred and thirty students, three hundred and thirty-two students. Kinsner, five hundred students. And as you go down as a total, that's one thousand nine hundred and twenty-two students our elementary schools are able to to support. Now, does that mean, wow, if we go over that, we really can't even move or get around? No, this is a formula based on how many students per classroom, so, so we can go above that a little bit. The reason that I didn't include capacity in preschool is because capacity for preschool is highly regulated. Here's how many students you can have in a room, here's the exact square footage you could have. So it doesn't have the ebb and flow that some of the other buildings have. As we take a look then, what is our current enrollment in in twenty-two, twenty-three? We, I did add the preschool, we have a hundred and forty-five students currently at the Lund Road preschool. And then you can see, without me reading through, that that's our current enrollment. We have two thousand four hundred and two students in pre-K to five in our, in our schools. And so you can see the deltas there. So going back to the capacity, it's saying, based on your capacity at Chapman, you have eighty-seven more students than they would recommend based on the capacity. Again, if you go to Chapman, it's tight, but it's livable. When you take a look at some of the other buildings, it's really tight, right? You, you're over a hundred and forty-six students at Kinsner, over a hundred and twenty students at Whitney. So if you take a look at the totals, you are exceeding the capacity of the buildings by four hundred and eighty students, which put differently is that's another Maraski Elementary School, right? At least in terms of the the capacity or another Whitney Elementary School. So we are at the point, as our enrollment has grown, that our, our student enrollment is exceeding the capacity that we have at the the five elementary schools in the district. So let's think, okay, are we going to level out? Can we live through this, this enrollment trend? Or do we have to start thinking for, thinking forward of what the enrollment will be? And as you can see, kind of in this blue, kind of next nine years, that bottom gray box, the grand total, which the only difference is between the K to twelve and grand total is the preschool numbers. These are the projections moving forward, that within the next ten years, we are going to, and this is the recommended projection, add about a thousand students to our district. And if you take a look at it, what you can see is in the elementary level, what was three hundreds, classes of three hundreds are now moving to classes of four hundreds. And then that kind of goes through the system. So the idea being, okay, we're, we're crowded now, we're making it work, it's livable, not ideal, but livable. Can we hang on? Our enrollment trends are saying no. We, we can't hang on, we've got to start thinking about the future. And if we take a look, and I just took the same graph and added that bottom bar. If you take a look at our capacity of our five elementary schools, look at the total K to five enrollment. In twenty thirty-one, thirty-two, ten years out, we are now over capacity by seven hundred and three students. So again, that's basically two elementary schools that we would need of our current structure to fulfill that. I'm going to pause there unless there's any clarifying questions or comments. I'm not going to read through all of this, but I'll share this with our community and and you've seen it, board members. But we've talked about, okay, all of our buildings were over capacity, but we're making it work. So what does that mean in practical ways of the day-to-day operations of the building? So what we've done at every preschool in all five of our elementary schools is take a look at, hey, what are some of the capacity challenges that we're having? So I'll just pick one from each, okay? At the preschool, we provide physical therapy and occupational therapy. We had to take their room to add another classroom. They are in a small area to provide therapy services to our students. It works, not ideal, right? Not ideal in terms of the gross or fine motor skills we want to develop. Chapman Elementary School, they have Title One services. Title One is in a small internal room within the media center, instead of having its own dedicated space. You'll see throughout some of our, our buildings that band and orchestra. Band and orchestra doesn't have a dedicated space. Music is, is on a cart. The media center is not just being used as a media center, it's being used for art or intervention or support. At Maraski, there's a traveling art teacher, they have multiple P E classes that have to share the gym. Interventions with students are done in hallways and offices because there's not additional space. I have to commend Mr. Griffin, he gave up his office. His office is now a gifted classroom and he's moved to a smaller area to provide that space. Sarar is one like Whitney and Chapman. Their gym is their auditorium, is their cafeteria, which creates their own challenges. You can read through, the media center has been consolidated multiple times. Sarar is one of our two elementary buildings that support the needs of students with moderate to intensive disabilities. They used to have a sensory room for students, that's had to be disabled and put into sensory centers in the, in the classroom. As well as E L services, so that's our English language services are provided in the classroom, which is a good strategy. But there's really not space for them to pull out and and do some small group work other than being in a, in a hallway. You, you could take a look at Whitney, they are utilizing their vestibules. So if you see some of the back vestibules that are not used by the public, they are utilizing that for some small group space as well. Intervention specialists are sharing spots, so we've made it work. Kids are getting a, a good education, but it's not ideal. As we take a look at kind of a, a term being thrown, or term used of educational adequacy, right? Do we have adequate space and facilities to meet the needs of students in twenty twenty-two and beyond? As you'll see, kind of in the next slide, we're suggesting that that needs to be a serious look, needs to be to, to take a look at that. So what we did last year, Mr. Brechner led the charge. The board facilities committee had a request for proposals from architectural firms to say, who could come in and and walk us through a process to kind of look at, look at the vision for the future for our, our facilities? And the first part of that was doing a facility analysis and taking a look at our properties, our, our buildings right now. Again, I don't expect you to be able to see this or read it, but this is an example of this fall. G P D and and their team came into each of our elementary buildings, as well as this building, and took a look and said, at all the, the, the infrastructure, the systems, the foundation, the walls, everything, how much would it cost to renovate this building up to the standards that it needs to be in twenty twenty-three, four and beyond? So, so kind of looking at this, and this is just kind of as FYI, I just kind of put some key dates together for you. So this tells you when the building was built and when it was, there was renovations to the building. So besides taking a look at the preschool when we bought it, I'm not sure when that church, it was originally a church was built. But if you take a look at the, the rest of of our buildings, we're sixty-ish years, so they've had a good lifespan, right? They've, they've done their job, they've, but if you take a look at, the majority of our buildings were built in the sixties, the fifties, sixties and the latest or early seventies, and then we've got Kinsner in ninety-eight and the Maraski addition. It was built in a different time of education, it was built for different needs, and so we've got to take a, a, a look at that. So in two thousand twelve, when we did the original bond issue, a team came in and they did an assessment. And this re- Reno is short for renovation or replace. So they say, hey, based on the square footage of the building, what is the price per square foot that it would be to replace it? Do the math and you get a figure. Let's say the figure's twenty million dollars. To replace building X would be twenty million dollars. They then go through and say, based on all the renovations we need to do, the renovations cost would be fifteen million dollars. And they get a, a percentage, what percentage of the replacement cost is the renovation cost? And if it's more than two-thirds, they say you should replace. So if you take a look at the numbers here in two thousand twelve, they assessed all of our buildings and said, Chapman, the renovation replacement cost was sixty-nine percent. So it would cost us sixty-nine percent of, of the cost to renovate, as it would to replace it. That's above two-thirds, it's in red, they're saying, hey, don't renovate it, it's not worth your money, replace it. So you could look through all of the percentages there, they did this building as well, it's seventy-five percent. So the only buildings they said, hey, it's worth keeping that building and renovating, is Kinsner. And the reason Maraski has two numbers is one of those numbers is for the new addition, the other number is for the original building. the other number is for the original building. So that would say, keep the new addition in the renovated section, but you need to get rid of the original K to two part of the building. We just completed this, and it's, it's in a draft form, they're still finalizing all their numbers, that's why you see ranges. So they did that based on two thousand twenty-two cost, here's the renovate, replace cost, they are still working to break out Maraski, so it makes sense, right? You're kind of in that orange range, you're close, but they're going to break that out into two separate figures. But you could see that, and they're still finishing this building, but you could still see that we are in need to replace the majority of our buildings. Now, I bring this up to say, kudos and phenomenal job to our custodial and maintenance staff, right? Because what these numbers say, in ten years, we've been able to keep that cost, or that percentage in the same range. And that's because of the phenomenal work of our custodial staff and our, our maintenance staff to, to over a ten-year lifespan, keep things in that same range. But I would also note that, you know, sometimes we think about, it could be a natural question of, hey, you, you are getting more students, this used to be an elementary building where we're sitting right now, right? This was Zeller's Elementary, why not just utilize the space that we have here? I bring our attention back to the fact that the, the, the number in two thousand twelve, and it's going to be in a similar range now, is saying, this building is, is not adequate for students to come to school and be a school, and it's going to cost more to renovate it than it's worth, so this building is not a viable option moving forward for, for students as, as a, as a school. And so where we're at right now is, we are in, we're finalizing that, collect data, assess the facility phase, and then we're looking into that piece that's going to start to engage our, our stakeholders and community. So for everybody that's watching, that's very interested in the future of our preschool or, or elementary buildings, we are developing our plans that will definitely hear your voice. So there will be a, a planning committee that will look at options for the future of our elementary buildings. That planning committee will, will vet some of those options, and then our larger community and parents as a whole will have an opportunity to have a voice in that process. So we're starting to get closer to that, and I'm excited to, to share that process here in the coming months. But I think an important piece for the Board to be aware of is, as we take a look and hear from the data that our facilities are aging, our facilities in terms of capacity are, are not meeting our needs as we grow as a school district, and, and most importantly, they're not meeting the educational needs of our students, as the type of education we'd like to bring to them in, in the next fifty years, that once we get all of this information and engage it, what that means for us as a school district is, we have to consider a bond project. We have to consider a bond project to support elementary buildings and to support renovating existing buildings. So just to keep that in mind, is as we go throughout this process and get the information and get the feedback from the community, that's a, that's a strategic piece that we're going to have to look at, and the Board is going to have to make the determination on, is, based on all of the information we have, what are the decisions that we need to move forward with this work? So update that I wanted to give, I'm sure in coming months we'll continue to provide ongoing updates, but Mr. Miko, I don't know if there's any questions or clarification, discussions you want to have.
I will just share that the elementary schools is one of the Board's strategic goals, it is a multi-year goal, and this is the work that we're committed to do and will continue to do it, asking for the public's input and collaboration. So as Cameron mentioned, we have planning committees that'll be forming, so the public can get involved, but we'll continue that, that process of dialogue and figuring out what the next steps are. But the Board is committed to do this work.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. With that, I'll bring up Steve Brechner, Operations Manager for the Business Service Report for this month. Steve?
Good evening, everyone. A couple items in the Business Services section for you this evening. The first one is lunchroom tables. Be resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent that the Board of Education approves the purchase of thirty sixty-inch round mobile flip-top tables from Schiffler Equipment for the middle school lunchroom, total quoted price of thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents, as found in Exhibit D.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stavcek, any discussion? How long are these tables going to last? They're expensive tables, they're going to last forever, right?
They are expensive tables. We've had really good success with the equipment, we've had purchased tables of similar ilk and structure. Let's say fifteen, fifteen years.
And if we take care of them, we'll probably get twenty or twenty-five, right?
Steve, are these replacing something, or are these an additional?
These are actually replacing, so these are eight-person tables that are replacing some of the two-person tables that are in the lunchroom now. There's about twenty-three, twenty-four of the smaller rectangular or square tables. Those are going to be repurposed to various classrooms and office areas where they're actually more beneficial. Putting a, putting a square table in a non-square area, such as the middle school lunchroom, is, is difficult. These tables are round, so they will fit better into the area. Because of some modest, as Dr. Robb went over, some modest increase, not only in numbers in the middle school, but also just scheduling changes, the lunchrooms are at capacity. This will give the students more access to seating and not have them scrambling for seats when it comes to eating their lunch. So that's why it's recommended for purchase.
Any other questions? George, take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
The second item is bus routes and stops. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that all bus routes and bus stops presented by the Transportation Department for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year be approved, and that the Operations Manager and Supervisor of Transportation be authorized to adjust the routes and stops as necessary during the school year. The third item is a gift, the employees of Chestnut Lake Apartments donated a box of book bags filled with school supplies, additional miscellaneous school supplies and lunchboxes for students at Whitney Elementary School.
Any questions for Steve?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next, our Director of Curriculum, Erin Green, will share the curriculum report for the month. Erin?
Thank you, good evening. Tonight I have five items under curriculum. The first item is a revision to our Strongsville Middle School Program of Studies. So this was on the February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two agenda, what we needed to do was make a couple revisions as to seventh grade electives, as it wasn't clear and erroneous wording. So we have now added in where it is a correct reflection of the encore courses that seventh grade students can take. Item two is resolved, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that Strongsville enter into an interpreting service agreement with Cross Thread Solutions, LLC, for interpreting services. This is for our EL students, and when we need to communicate with the families of these students, we utilize these services, and that can be found in Exhibit E. Item three is a student-teacher affiliation agreement. Item four is a clinical experience agreement. So these are recommendations that we enter in, or contracts that we enter in. Item three is with Baldwin Wallace University for student teachers, and item four is clinical experiences with Ohio University and Strongsville City Schools, and those are in Exhibits F and G respectively. Lastly, we have some student-teacher observation field experiences to be placed. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the following three students shall be placed for the purpose of observation field experiences. And as you can see, we have one placed at Whitney, one at Chapman, and another at Whitney, all assigned with a current teacher, and the dates are September twenty-third through December second of twenty twenty-two. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Erin. We do not have any items for student services this month, so I'll turn over our Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with the Human Resource Report. Jenny?
Thank you. Under Human Resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, resignations for certificated supplemental contracts. Under E2, appointments for non-certificated staff. Appointments for certificated substitutes. Appointments for our non-certificated substitutes. Appointments for certificated supplemental contracts. And for the next item, the appointment of a non-certificated supplemental contract for Student Council at Kinsner Elementary, I do need to pull that one from the floor, there was a change of mind for that position. We have the appointment for a certificated district substitute. Under E3, changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Under E4, change in status for non-certificated staff. Under E5, educational upgrades for many of our staff. Under E6, medical leave for certificated staff, medical leave for non-certificated staff. Under E7, we have a one unpaid leave for non-certificated staff, and under E8, volunteer chaperones. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jenny. And next we have our Technology Report with Dave Binkley, our Director of Instructional Technology. Dave?
I have one item tonight for the sale of end-of-life Chromebooks and surplus TCL earbuds. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent that the Board of Education appear, or approves, the sale of the end-of-life used Chromebooks at a cost of no less than ten dollars each, and new surplus TCL earbuds at a cost of five dollars each. Devices and details will be advertised on our district website and district newsletters. All devices and earbuds will be sold on a first-come, first-served basis. Devices will be sold as-is with no further support supplied by Strongsville City Schools.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave?
Dave, do you want to tell us about the new URL for Strongsville City Schools TV?
I didn't write it down, but it is, you go to www.strognet.com backslash SCS TV. We did have a redirect, so it's easier to find our SCS broadcast now for any home football game, or anything like the Board of Meetings, or our school performances and concerts.
Say that one more time with a dot org.
Yeah.
I guess that would be important. It's www.strognet.org backslash SCS TV.
Thank you, Dave. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions for Cameron? Report on Polaris Career Center. Mrs. Bissell?
Thank you. A couple things I wanted to highlight today. I wanted to give a shout-out to PPG, who's been providing grants for our Project Lead the Way program, of which we have one here in Strongsville at the middle school, and they've given grants to support that program for eight consecutive years. I know we have community members here involved with PPG, so thank you for that. And also to congratulate Diane Zander, she was named the Outstanding Project Lead the Way Administrator for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So that's fantastic, and we're grateful for their work in our middle school. A couple of things, I know school just started, so this was a little bit of a shock to me, but I already got my postcard about enrollment for next school year. So, so for those students who are currently sophomores, be aware that you're going to have opportunities to learn about Polaris coming up here, starting in October, when Polaris staff and students are going to be visiting our high school to teach and, you know, invite you to enjoy, join their programs for your junior and senior years. And then also, a little bit further out, November fourteen through sixteen, those same students would have a chance to go to Polaris and see the classrooms and, and those programs in action. So if you're a sophomore, be ready to prepare for your junior year. And then one final note, in October, I'm really excited about this, we have an opportunity as a Board here, and Superintendent and Treasurer, to join all of the associate districts at Polaris Career Center, so that's Fairview, North Olmsted, Olmsted Falls, Brook Park, Berea. All of our Boards have an opportunity to have a nice dinner together, and we'll be able to associate with those members and just have conversations, meet one another, and enjoy Polaris's wonderful food. So I'm really excited about that, and fellow Board members, I hope that you can make it. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Michelle?
When's the date of that, Michelle?
I think it's October twelfth, eleven.
Or all those.
It's October eleventh, and it's circled sixteen, but the rest of these people.
Yeah, that's, okay.
I know, I remember, they were on hiatus because of the construction, and then the little thing called the pandemic got in the way, but we're all looking forward to them returning. It's a great, a great opportunity for us to experience what Polaris has to offer, and the culinary program gets to show off the dinner, so it's very important that we're critical about all their work, so that they can have constructive feedback. Report on legislation, the Ohio Legislature is still on recess, it is campaign season, so I suggest the public get informed about who they're going to vote for, and then in November during the general election, please vote. Board Liaison Reports. Laura, do you want to start with City Council?
Sure, I can do that. City Council has returned from their hiatus, they had two meetings this month, and I want to start by congratulating Officer Jeffrey Benedictus. At the beginning of the month, he took his oath of office to Sergeant, I was able to be there and see him and his family for that, so that was, that was nice. This past weekend, they did the Arts at the Chalet, I heard that that was very highly attended, and before that, they had the Breakfast on the Bridge, which again was over a thousand people attended. Coming up, they have a Business Networking Day, October twelfth, at the Strongsville Rec Center, that's at four PM. As of Monday, almost all the tables were filled, so if you'd like to go out and see what all the businesses in Strongsville are about, you can go to the Rec Center at four PM on October twelfth. Also, there's been a lot of talk about the beautification and updating of the town center. I know a lot of the council people and the mayor are working on procuring the funds for that through grants and donations, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about that in the upcoming meetings. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Strongsville Education Foundation.
Why, yes. The Strongsville Education Foundation did have a meeting this past Monday, it was a strategic planning meeting, gearing up again towards fundraising and procuring grants to keep feeding those grants into our schools. So besides the two grants that they just, that we just approved tonight, I know that they are looking forward to connecting with our teachers and staff to provide a lot more opportunities for our students. And that concludes my report.
Strongsville PTA Council?
I just want to say that they are planning a dance at the middle school. It's called "Widow, Let's Get This School Year Glowing," and that is Friday, September thirtieth at seven o'clock, and more details I'm sure will come to about tickets and the like of that. And then they've also raised their grant item from six thousand to ten thousand. And thank you, Laura, for attending, because I couldn't be at the last meeting. And their next meeting is October sixth at nine thirty.
Thank you, Sharon. Board Committee Reports. Do we have a Finance Committee?
Yes, George, Sharon and I will be working on a date for our next meeting, hopefully at the beginning of October.
Excellent. Policy Committee?
Next meeting's to be determined.
Facilities Committee?
I, Cameron stole our thunder on that, we did meet last week, and had a really good discussion and start to the work that Cameron shared with you. Our next meeting will be October twentieth at six thirty, and we are going to start touring the buildings and actually getting in to see ourselves, you know, what's going on in those buildings, so I'm excited about that, and that will be on October twentieth.
And so the only correction is, is it will not be in this building?
At Chapman.
At Chapman. So we'll be, the Facilities Committee, which is, again, open to the public, will be meeting at Chapman. Business Advisory Council?
Next meeting is Friday, October seventh at seven thirty AM, right here.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Consent Calendar. Actions by the Board of Education and adoption of the Consent Calendar mean that all items appearing in the agenda with asterisks are adopted by a single motion unless a member of the Board or Superintendent requests otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? We are removing Section nine E2, supplemental contract prorated is being removed from the agenda, everything else is as listed.
One more.
That was a separate vote. Done. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stavcek, any discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none, please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Superintendent's Timely Information.
Just a few updates, as we talk about the, the middle school dance here in a couple weeks, we've got homecoming coming up this weekend, so I know the kids have had a great time with all the spirit, the work that they've been doing, but Friday, September 23rd, this Friday, we've got the home football game versus Cleveland Heights, and the, the dance is going to be on Saturday, September 24th. So one of the interesting things is, you know, typically homecomings in a gym, the last couple of years, we've had it outside at Pacatan Stadium, and I just want to let everybody know, I know Mr. Winkler's done a great job of communicating this, but this is what the student, we did it because of COVID, but it stayed outside because that the students have shared and through their feedback that they prefer it. So I actually had my Student Advisory Council meeting today, so I was talking to the kids, and they're like, oh, we love it, we love being outside. So it'll be, looks like it's going to be a beautiful night for the kids to have a, a good time celebrating homecoming this Saturday. And just as a reminder, I put it up in my parent update, I think a week or so ago, parent teacher conferences are coming up, your principals have been sharing that information in the newsletters, or will shortly, and the dates and times of when those are, are on the screen, so hopefully you'll be able to join and get some great information discussion and partnership with our staff.
Next is Board of Education. We have a few housekeeping items. Number one, be it resolved at the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education, grants approval for Michelle Bissell to attend the OSBA Capitol Conference, November 13th through the 15th. Cost to register is $320. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Abstain.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. The second vote is the same. Be it resolved by the Board of Education, approval for Sharon Cobain to attend the School Board Capitol Conference, cost to register is $320. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stavcek, any discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Abstain.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, the motion carries. And third is for the Board of Education to grant approval to Laura Wolf Hausum to attend the Ohio School Boards Association Capitol Conference on November 13th through the 15th, $325, $320 per person. Inflation, it's kicking in. $320 per person, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ooh. Ooh.
The motion by Mrs. Bissell, do I have a second?
Did she win?
She won. My right ear works better. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cobain, any discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Cobain, or Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Sorry. Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Abstain.
And I would just like to thank all my fellow board members for taking their responsibilities seriously, and it's important work to take the, you know, full days out of all of our busy schedules, it's well worth it, and thank you. Any other others? I just wanted to piggyback on the day at the Chalet. It was a lovely event, and I wanted to give a shout-out to our band, they did a great job opening the day at, at the Chalet, and I wanted to give a, a shout-out to our show choir, they showed up as Disney princesses and princesses, and all the little children were thrilled, and they performed, and it was really quite nice. And I wanted to give a shout-out to our dancers from Strongsville that did a nice job showing their art and sharing it with the community. So that was a really nice event. And then the other shout-out I was going to give was the lead-in to SCS TV. Because I could find it easily, I was able to watch Mrs. Gansey's Constitution Day at Whitney, and if you liked Jeopardy, it was even more exciting than Jeopardy. So I suggest you watch it by going to strongnet.org/scstv, and there's a song that Mrs. Gansey said that if you call her voicemail and sing the song, the kids get extra points. I have no idea what the song is, so maybe we'll find out at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Any other others? Meeting notification, a regular Board of Education meet, regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, October 13th at 7:00 PM in this building, and then a regular Board of Education meeting will be held Thursday, October 27th, 7:00 PM in this building. We do have need for appointment of Treasurer Pro Tempore for October 13th, 2022 Board of Education meeting. The Treasurer Pro Tem would be Nicholas Mancini. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stavcek, any discussion? George, why are you not going to be here?
I'll be on vacation.
Excellent. We are looking forward to the great job that Nick's going to do for us. Please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, the motion carries. We do have need of executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I think it was her.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Stavcek, by a hair.